We do have a quorum, and we'll just declare the meeting open. This time, we'll ask Councilman Stevenson to lead us in the pledge and invocation.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in prayer.
Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for today. Thank you that we can come here together and lead as you have led us. Please be with our first responders as they go throughout this week, serving and protecting the citizens of Sherman, and be with us all, and may everyone get home safe from this meeting tonight. In your heavenly name we pray, amen.
Amen.
All right, counsel, have you had the opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting?
No, I've approved the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll open public hearing. Linda, if you'll read B1 for us, please.
Ordinance 6222, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman amending Section 8, subsection 5A, ordinance number 2280, so as to grant a specific use permit to allow an apartment complex, ye urban lofts, in a C1 retail business district in the 4,800 to 4,900 blocks of Knollwood Road, being lot 1, block 2, replat of blocks 2 through 9, North Creek addition, Section 1, and Olive Block 1 of the replat of North Creek addition, Section 1, containing 2.302 acres in the James H. Clark survey abstract number 275. Young Enterprises LP owner, David Baca studio architect, and Helvey Wagner surveying, surveyor, providing for repealer clause, providing that this specific use permit shall be granted subject to certain conditions, providing a penalty not to exceed $2,000, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Okay. Thank you, Linda Scott.
Yeah, this request is for a 66-unit apartment complex out by Knollwood. It's gonna be three stories. P&amp;Z did approve this at a seven to zero vote, subject to the staff review letter. We had no objections.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone here to address this item this evening? Okay, if not, we'll move to B2. Linda, if you'll read that item for us.
Ordinance 6223, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman amending Section 8, subsection 5A, ordinance number 2280, so as to grant a specific use permit to allow ground-mounted solar panels in an R.A. single-family agricultural district at 3335 Carriage Circle, being lot 24, Lambeth Road Estates, Ricardo and Odilia Ayala owners, Sun City Solar Energy Solar Contractor and Synaptic Solar subcontractor, providing for repealer clause, providing that this specific use permit shall be granted subject to certain conditions, providing a penalty not to exceed $2,000, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Thank you, Linda. Scott?
Yeah, this request is for a specific use permit for ground-mounted solar panels at 3335 Carriage. The maximum height would be eight foot tall, and in the staff review letter, glare and reflection cannot go to adjacent properties. The board voted seven to zero to approve this, subject to the staff review letter.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone here to address this item this evening? Okay. If not, Linda, if you'll read item B3 for us, please.
Ordinance 6224, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman amending Section 12, ordinance number 2280, so as to include certain properties within the R1 one-family residential district at 1129 South Montgomery Street, being lot 8, block 7, Jones and Wainwrights addition, Ale Umar owner, Danish Samad prospective buyer, and Copley Land surveying, surveyor, providing for repealer, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Scott?
Yeah, this request is to go from commercial to residential. The existing structure on the property is an old store that was a neighborhood grocery store. The owners are wanting to convert this to a dwelling, and so they needed the zone change to do that. They're planning on providing parking to the rear, concrete or asphalt parking off of Rosedale. The board voted seven to zero to approve this, subject to the staff review letter.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone here to address this item this evening? Not, Linda, if you'll read B4 for us, please.
Ordinance 6225, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman amending Section 12, ordinance number 2280, so as to include certain properties within the R1 one-family residential district in the 200 block of West Park Avenue, being lots 1 through 8, block 31, replat of blocks 4, 5, 6, 15, 16, 17, 29, 30, 31, 40, and 41, south side addition. Barton Capital Limited owners, Ron Barton representative and Marshall Sartan, surveyor, providing for repealer, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Scott?
Yeah, this request is to change the zoning from manufacturing to residential on Park Street. It would be eight lots on Park. We did receive, since the P&amp;Z meeting, we've received two letters in opposition and one in favor. The board did vote seven to zero to approve this, subject to the staff review letter.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone here to address this item this evening? Okay, if you could come up one at a time, I guess, Ron, if you want to start, if you'll say your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Ron Barton, 715 South Sam Rayburn Freeway, Sherman, Texas, 75090. The plan is to build eight homes there. There's eight lots, and that was the last thing that was there, was single-family residence. And it'd be, you know, 1300 to 1500 square foot with garages. Today's affordable housing, 160 range.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, Brad? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Brad Douglas, CEO of Douglas Distributing. I live at 2400 Meadows Lane, Sherman, 75092. I'm here to address ordinance number 6225. It's a zoning change from M1 Light Manufacturing to the R1 one-family residential districts at the 200 block of West Park Avenue in South Sherman. We learned about this change, or this proposed change, after the June 18th Planning and Zoning meeting. Our family business and other transportation companies are located outside the area in which planning and zoning normally sends notice to. The challenge for us is the City of Sherman has designated Park Avenue as the designated truck route. It's the, it's what we use to get our trucks from, from the interior of Sherman, whether it's Bulkmatic, the Christmas Tree Store, Douglas Distributing, out to Highway 75. It's a route designed to keep the trucks out of the residential city streets. Our challenge is the designated truck route from West Park, from, our challenge, or the opportunity, right now, is from Montgomery Street to Crockett Street, is 63 feet wide. No problem at all? Is this up here? Okay. Sixty, 63 feet wide, which makes on-street parking possible, as well as trucks being able to pass on that possible. The challenge is, when you go from Crockett Street down to Highway 75, that route narrows to 25.8 feet. Now, the challenge is, our trucks are 10.8 feet wide, so right now, we have to carefully pass 18-wheelers on that. If you had any type of residential parking in front of those, those new homes, it would really be a challenge. So, we've tried the installing, no parking signs. We have that on Montgomery Street between Park and Olive. In all fairness, that really hasn't worked. You know, the, as those new homes, we have the delivery trucks, guests, and residents parking in front of, in front of their homes, and I can certainly understand why, and we've never really enforced that because Montgomery Street's wide enough. You know, it's probably 45 feet wide at that point compared to the 25 feet that we have at, at Park here, so. This, this proposed zoning change, which was originally declined by planning and zoning on May 16th, 2006, when it was first proposed, and again, was due to traffic concerns. One successful thing that we did was the area between Crockett and Walnut, there was some residential available, development available on the south side, and the city, I think in partnership with Sedco, expanded that from a 25-foot lane to a 63-foot lane, which allowed then the necessary street parking and, and truck traffic to be able to pass, so. Gosh, we're excited about the new residential growth in South Sherman. We worked with Ron and his family in the past, we've bought and sold lots together, and we really want his investment in South Sherman. That's part of our neighborhood, so it's important to us. We just need enough room there on that narrow little gap out to 75, and we think a, we think a road widening would, would accommodate both the new residential construction and continue to keep that corridor as the designated truck route. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you. Thanks.
Come on up, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. My name is Bill Douglas. I live at 2301 San Miguel, Sherman, Texas, 75092, and I just wanted to add something that my son didn't, didn't comment on. As you know, we've been doing business down there for 39 years, and we, we've accumulated a few trucks in the process. We've got about 100 of them that run up and down that street because that is the traffic lane. The problem we have isn't with development, it's just the width of that street. And if you don't choose to make the street wider, I'll just share this with you. In our company alone, we've had three accidents at that intersection of Crockett where it chokes down to 25 feet. People come down Crockett, coming off 75, and they don't slow down at that point. They're going 60 miles an hour frequently to that intersection, and that's why we, they've nailed us three times. But it's narrow, and, you know, I get it, but I just wanted to share with you just a safety concern I have. We're gonna kill somebody, but I don't want it to be any of us, and the dilemma is, when you add streets, rather, when you add homes to narrow streets, you introduce the element of parking. Kids run out from behind parking, pets run out, I mean, we have that on Montgomery. Believe me, it's like dodgeball sometimes, going down Montgomery with the kids and the bicycles and, and the animals, because the animals chase each other, the kids chase each other. So, we just want to be sure it's safe for everybody. It's a safety thing that concerns me, and that's why I'm testifying here tonight. And I would appeal to you, if you choose to give this to Ron, it'd be nice to have the homes. Make sure he gets the street wide enough that we don't run over all these, all the people that buy his houses. Thank you.
Thanks, Will.
Is there anyone else to speak on this item? All right. Item B5, adopting a revised official zoning map. Scott?
The Planning and Zoning Board recommends the adoption of the official zoning map. We do this time to time. It makes all the zone changes official. The last adoption was January of 2018. They did vote unanimous to do this.
Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone here to address this item this evening? Okay. If not, we will close the public hearing and consider the adoptions of, the adoption of the ordinances. Counsel? Questions, comments?
I have a question on 6224, just to make sure I understood correctly. Scott, I love the idea that they're going to be renovating or updating that old store, but I want to make sure, you did say, because I did not see on the plans where the parking is going to be. So I'm assuming they will enter whatever parking they have off of Rosedale. Is that correct?
That's what they've told us they're planning on doing, is off of Rosedale, and they'll have to have one space per bedroom, minimum two spaces, but...
Okay, because the, the front of the building, you come down the two steps and you're basically almost in the street.
Right on the property line.
And, so I just wanted to make sure, and it will be of some form of, what do we call it, a solid surface or non-dusty surface?
Right, be concrete or asphalt.
Okay, or asphalt.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I had, just to make sure I was sure on that. Thank you.
I have a question for ordinance 6222.
Okay.
I'm already concerned about the traffic out there on Travis Street and North Creek, and my understanding is, at some point, Knollwood Road will be closed from Hillary to North Creek. Do you know any?
Yes, we've been in coordination with developer for a year and a half now, trying to figure out how to get that situation at Hillary and Knollwood figured out, and the current plan we're looking into is extending Hillary further west to tie into Travis, and then at least the intersection at North Creek and Knollwood will be removed. We're still trying to work with both property owners on either side of Knollwood to see how far down we abandon that, whether we put a cul-de-sac in or whether we abandon it right there at Hillary, but we're working on that.
What about a traffic study for Signal?
We don't need to do one.
Oh. What about a Signal?
Tech dot has done, has done the study already, and that area does meet warrant, and their biggest concern was how to, how to make that work with that intersection of Knollwood. And when I called to talk to them about the Hillary intersection, they asked me that question. I said, "Well, good news, we're not gonna have to worry about that because it's being removed." So, hopefully by next summer, we'll have at least work started, or maybe even a signal in operation at that intersection.
Okay. And, and the road, and Knollwood Road closed presumably by that time?
Correct.
Still work to do on it, but that's the direction we're heading.
Correct.
Could we put a stipulation on this ordinance to say something about the street being closed? I hate to see another apartment complex go up in that area with all the traffic, but in addition to having that crazy, as I call it, intersection out there and adding more traffic.
The intent is that, is that we'll have Hillary designed and at least under construction at the same time that these apartments are being built. So, it'll be our, it'll be my, my responsibility to make sure that intersection disappears before the apartments are leased.
Before that, okay. And then, my other thing is that taking 19 spaces from our ordinance on the parking, I mean, that just seems a little strange to me, Scott, to remove, let them have 19 spaces less than our normal ordinance.
It was strange to me as well. At the P&amp;Z meeting, and I believe the applicants are here, they could explain to you, the majority of the units there are one-bedroom units.
But even when we have one-bedroom units, normally we have two people in a one-bedroom unit, and I understand it's more an upscale apartment complex, but what's to say that there's not going to be a motorcycle or boat parked in that space?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Baca may want to speak to that.
Would you like me to come up?
That's fine. I just, mine is not a question to you so much as I'm saying that I'm against the 19 spaces being removed from yours.
Sure. I'm David Baca, 100 North Travis. So, we did look at a reduction of the parking primarily because out of the 66 units, 60 of them are one-bedroom units. It is true that there could be two people living in the one-bedroom apartment. One of the things that we did was, we looked at ordinances across the state in general. Every major city follows one and a half spaces per one-bedroom, two spaces for a two-bedroom, and generally, two and a half spaces for a three-bedroom. So, we're not doing anything that's actually out of the ordinary when you look at other major cities across the state, and it was all of the major cities that we looked at. Furthermore, I'm trying to remember the name of the code, Scott, but it's a, it's a newer code that Sherman has adopted that has to do with a large-scale development, and they actually have reduced the parking below that standard to one and a quarter spaces per one-bedroom. And so, the City of Sherman actually has that on their books today, and so what we're asking for is actually more than that.
Scott, can you speak to that?
I don't, no.
I wasn't, I didn't come prepared for that specific one, but it's, I'm trying to think of the name of the ordinance that it falls under. It's for a large-scale development where you've got, where you've got residential and...
Plan developments?
Plan development, yeah, it's a plan development ordinance.
Is the reason you're wanting fewer spaces because you don't have the room for it, or is it...
The reason, that's a great question. So, the, there's two reasons. One is that we would rather have more green space than just paving the whole thing, but primarily because it's, it's, most of the apartment complexes actually are heavier in two-bedroom than they are in one-bedroom units or even three-bedroom units, but here, the, the weight has shifted primarily 90% to one-bedroom units, and we feel like that it's going to be way overparked. Not only did we use the one and a half spaces per one-bedroom, two spaces for the two-bedrooms, but we also added in 10% more additional just to cover visitors and any additional spaces that may be needed for that.
So, based on the current requirements in other cities, this has more parking? It's safe to say?
We're, we're actually matching what the other cities have. What I'm suggesting is, is the current ordinance, and I wish I could remember the name of it, but it's the, it's basically a PD-type ordinance that Sherman adopted not too long ago for apartment complexes. It actually has a lower parking ratio than what we're asking for today.
Okay.
And just for the counsel's information, the variance was already granted by the Board of Adjustments. That's not what you're voting on.
Yeah, we're just voting on the...
SGP.
SGP.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance 6222 be accepted as written.
Second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I do have two questions and comments on 6225. I was actually on the planning and zoning back in '06. So, ordinance came through, the zone change came through the first time. I don't really see that any of the issues at that time have changed. You know, I mean, the traffic is still there, the road is still the same size. I am a firm believer in the fact that Mr. Barton has the right to do with what he wants on his property within the confines of what the ordinance says and what we have on the books. I'm curious if there's a way that we can, I don't want to use table, that's a little bit strong, but with the, with the thinking that eventually we allow Mr. Barton to do this with the widening of that road. And it's ironic that we have Mr. Douglas involved, that's also represents Sedco, that could also be a hand in, I think Sedco had a hand in widening the other portion of that, so I don't know if there's a way or a, a solution that we can come to tonight based on that, but, you know, I hate to just deny it, and then again, I hate to just pass it under those circumstances.
I agree that we table it.
So, I spoke to Kent at Sedco after a few phone calls I had over the last week. He was gonna reach out to Clint, and he seemed to think that that was a reasonable project for Sedco to take on, although that's not a firm commitment, but just to give you an idea of where Kent's head was, that he seemed like that was something because it's been done in the past and that we have a large industrial users in that area, large amount, that he thought it was a reasonable.
You know, and it hadn't been mentioned tonight, but I know one of the main issues was, and back then, it was Whitmire Container, and I have been connected, contacted by Jeff Whitmire, who still owns the building, and Christmas designers, they, they come and go, and I don't know that they do that 24 hours a day like Whitmire Container did at the time, but they're backing their trucks up to that loading dock there as well, and, you know, who knows, there's, there's back, some considerable talk about Burlington possibly coming back online with some type of commercial industrial use there, which is only going to add to the, to the traffic there. So, I say all that to say, I think it warrants the widening of that road. And again, I don't think it's, I think Mr. Barton has the right to do with the property that he has purchased and has been trying to do with something there for 13 years now.
Does, does anyone know why they didn't extend it all the way out?
That was my question.
In the first place, anyone around at that time?
Sure, it was a money issue or something, but I don't know the answer to that. Scott?
We can't do a zone change conditional. You can table it to gather more information for however long you need to do that, because you may want to check out road widening and how that would even affect the Whitmire building because now, when they back up, they're partially in the street right away, I believe, but...
Can they, can they have, I was skinning that cat, by the way, but can they actually back out onto Park? Can, can Ron's houses actually, if it's...
If they had a driveway there, they'd be backing into the traffic lane, yes.
Would it be in a thoroughfare like that, they can back?
They would be.
They would be.
I have a question. Right now, I think we're all probably very much in favor of you being able to build. It's just the street width that is, and so, right now, I probably would have to vote to table it so that we can bring it back up and not delay it until we know whether Sedco can help us. But saying that, one of the other possibilities, and I don't know, is there is an alleyway that runs there. Is it possible that that alley could be used as the main access for the homes that are built there? Is the alley wide enough? I mean, right now, it's declared an alley, and I don't know the answer to that, so we may have to look into that to see if that might be faster by making some, you know, I know there's some poles in the alley, some light poles or whatever. Could those be moved and, are the alley widened enough that that could be made into a street so that that would happen faster for Mr. Barton to be able to start developing as opposed to waiting on Sedco and widening?
Yeah, Ron.
I'm just, I'm throwing that out there.
I was thinking that that was a consideration the first time, and maybe even backing the houses up to Park and using that as a...
And what happens if you start getting into that developmental cost that takes it up beyond what the market would bear in that area for housing?
Okay. I didn't know.
But it's a great idea. It's just that the, the market hadn't been that great up until the last several years, and so we didn't push it before and didn't try to, you know, we've had some lookers on the commercial side, but, you know, including Dollar General, but they've all looked and then not made anything happen. So, we just thought, well, we have an economy and that'll support it, we try to do something, but we could put no-parking zone up there.
He already said that didn't work for the others, for the other, he, he already said that didn't work for the other streets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'd, I'd hate for you to pay for flat work and then we pay for it again when we tear it up when we widen that road, so I think I would like to address the issue. Our truck route's going down through there, what these guys are telling us is not wide enough, period. And he can't build his houses because that route's not wide enough, and if we let him build his houses and then we decide to make it wider, well, then we're just gonna be throwing more money at the problem, so I think...
Mr. Douglas has already said there's accidents been there.
So, I, I move towards, we need to table this situation, find out about widening the road, and find out on some sort of time scale of what that could possibly take, and then come back and let's not throw good money after bad. So, I would move that we table this.
Okay, motion to table.
I like that idea. I'm gonna ask Sedco.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion second to table. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The item is tabled. Okay, we still have 6223, 24, and 26. Counsel, any questions on those items?
I'm sorry, I've got a question on 26.
No, that's good.
26. So, what, give me one or two major changes in our zoning map. Give me one or two major changes in our zoning map. Pull that thing up, and it's pretty complicated, but give me an idea of what we're changing.
We update the map monthly. Our engineering department does.
So, maybe changes that we've made as a council that you...
Yeah, every month, all the zoning, the SGP's and the zone changes that have been made, which have been tremendous amount in the past year, year and a half, and the state of Texas says they're not official until the map has been adopted by the council.
So, we're not making any...
We're not changing anything that hadn't been before public hearing.
Gotcha, okay.
Can you itemize those for us, Scott?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve 6226.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, 6226 passes. All right, so we've got 6223 and 6224. Counsel, any questions on those items?
Make a motion that we approve as written.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Josh.
My second.
All right. Good discussion, thank you. All right, we are to the consent agenda. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion without discussion unless a council member or citizen requests a specific item to be discussed and voted on separately. The consent agenda includes items C3, E2, E3, E4, E5, E6, and E7.
I'd like E3 to be pulled from the agenda, please. Sorry to ask a question.
All right, anybody else? All right, so we get a motion on consent minus E3.
Move to approve consent minus E3.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, let's discuss E3, so we wrap them up together.
Okay, on E3, I'm not sure, and I've looked at the map, what the replanting is doing. The address that is 511 Northeast Street is one of four apartments or houses in a duplex. There are two duplexes there, all righty, and 511 is the northern location. What are the other, what are they doing? Because I'm concerned about parking also there. What land are they adding? Because that's already got a building on it.
So, it looks like the replat is, currently contains two duplexes that are under construction, right? I don't know if they're complete or not.
They look like they're completed other than driveways, because even the brickwork is done on the exterior.
Okay, so the parking requirements would still have to conform with our own existing parking ordinance, right? One space per bedroom.
Are they adding land on each side of it? Do you know?
I believe that there's probably three lots that are all stacked with each other. As you can, if you look at the plat, there's lot lines all over the place, and so in these areas, we typically ask in the replat to clean everything up and clearly distinguish individual lots where the buildings are going to sit, instead of it being all of lot nine, part of lot eight, and part of lot 10. And so, that's...
Clint, I drove by there today, and I don't know, I didn't take my tape measure out there or anything, but it looked like the two duplexes were awful close together. So, if they're making that one big lot, would that possibly be for the sidelines, the lot lines, so that they would have the adequate side yards?
It's zoned R2 multifamily, which allows them to put the three units on one lot. So, they're plating it all into one lot.
I just didn't understand why they're plating it into one lot. Okay, you know, what the...
Because if it's, correct me, if it's multifamily, then that means that they can put all three onto one lot, right?
A duplex is permitted use in multifamily.
Okay.
As well as apartments. They didn't join it and make three units in any building because that requires a fire sprinkler. So, they cut it down to two units each to be multifamily.
Okay. It allows them to put them a little closer together, though, right?
They can squeeze them into one lot.
Exactly.
But you might as well think of it as one big building.
It's one big, yeah.
With a small...
They're to retain under one ownership.
I just...
Hopefully with good drainage.
All right, so where is the parking going to be for that location?
It'd have to be off of, is that East Street?
Is it going to be in front of the duplex, then?
Is Mr. Tobar here?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm just afraid we've, something's gotten approved, and now I'm looking at it and going, how did that get done? You know, and that's why I'm asking questions, to clarify what was done, okay, and why they're wanting to have this replat right now. I like the looks of them, I just don't understand what we're doing, and that's why I'm asking you.
Scott, can you tell us, is this pretty typical to do a replat after the construction's been completed?
I mean, something's obviously happened, and they've had to come back and do it.
Okay, so...
They've started building, and they've had to come back and readjust something. I mean, let's just call it what it is. They're adjusting something after they started building it. No, typically, they would have filed and everything, and then they would have started building, and I mean, let's call it, spade to spade.
They need to redo it.
Okay, we're trying to fix it now. But they will be allowed to have the two duplexes on that one lot, and that's what's being done now, correct? There's two in two.
Think of it as a miniature apartment complex.
Uh-huh, okay.
That's what it is.
Staff review letter calls out the parking and those kinds of things.
It's standard.
Okay, all right, that'll be fine. Thank you.
It's something different every day.
I just happen to have watched this one be built from when they were moving the dirt, and I'm not a construction individual, so I have to ask questions to make sure I understand. So, all right, then I will move to approve of E3.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Linda, if you'll read C1 for us, please.
Resolution 6498, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sherman, supporting the City of Sherman Parks and Recreation's application to the Texas Department of Transportation's 2019 transportation alternatives set aside, safe routes to school infrastructure, call for projects, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Teresa.
This resolution is a support for the grant application that we will submit to TextDOT. If you remember, back in April, we submitted the preliminary application, and we were fortunate enough to proceed to the detailed application, which requires a resolution by the City Council for their support. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Absolutely, no costs.
Do you have any idea how we are in the running or anything for this?
It's very competitive because it's, there's no match. Fingers crossed.
All right.
You need this.
Well, I move to approve Resolution 6498.
A second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.